Good afternoon and welcome to the February 23rd, 2012 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Pastor Rodney McFallin of Hebron Missionary Baptist Church. Would you please stand?
May you please bow your heads for a word of prayer. Father, we come approaching your throne not just for proper protocol, but we come because we realize that we are finite, feeble, and frail, and that we need your divine assistance. And so, Father, I thank you for allowing us to come in this place, to come together for a common cause, to serve your people. And I pray now, God, that you would bless every motive, bless every mindset, bless every decision, God, that not be for personal gain, but that it might benefit your people. We thank you now, God, for our uprising this morning. And thank you, God, for what we shall do at the end of the day. We ask now, God, that as we carry out your will, that you would breathe fresh upon us. In the name of Christ, we pray, amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, council, first item is a citizen comment. Kelly Highcamp.
You can tell me time? Who tells me time? He says three. Okay. I'm gonna get right to the point. I'm quite concerned about some things that I've learned, and they're basically questions for you, J. Dean. I'm reading that we're spending $12 million on an event center. I'm very... Okay. I'm sure you'll have all the time, since you have the right to close, to say everything. But I'm reading that we're spending $12 million on an event center, and obviously, I'm very concerned about an animal shelter. I've also been told several times that there is no intention for the city of Longview to ever build a shelter, that the money's not there. So when I see that we're spending $12 million on an event center, and we don't have any money to spend on an animal shelter, after what I've been told, I'm very confused and I'm very concerned. Just recently, I learned that you had a closed-door meeting with a representative of the animal shelter, and during that meeting, you were offered by that representative...
Excuse me one second, Kelly. Let's get off of that "you heard, he said, that she said." A, $12 million facility. I don't know who put that out, but it wasn't anybody on this council. Number two, as far as the animal shelter and a potential private-public partnership to build a shelter is still an item that we continue to work with. We were at a recent meeting with the council for a retreat. That item has come up. It continues to be looked at, discussed, and there has been no decision made on that at all. Third, I have not met with any member of the Humane Society that offered or suggested to give the city their assets. A, it's not legal. Okay? Never happened. So if you have some more, but let's make sure. I don't know which his source is. As a matter of fact, the News Journal today contacted the chairman of the Humane Society Board, who also said that's absolutely false.
So it's your statement that you've never met, closed-door with any representative of the shelter, and they've offered to hand over the operations to the city of Longview?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly right.
Specifically, I'm not talking about assets right now, Mayor. I'm talking about them running, you running the shelter. In other words, them coming to you and saying, "We don't have the funds to run this. We're gonna ask that the city take it over."
No, ma'am. Never happened.
That never happened.
This isn't a court, Kelly. Never happened.
Okay. And specifically also, I'd like to know. I understand you continue to talk about the private-public situation, but I've yet to hear anything specific. Just specifically, how much private money would be due before the city would submit any funds? And how much is the city willing to put up? I understand that there's always an offer on the table, but it's so general and so vague at this point. It appears to me that nothing's ever coming to fruition. I understand you're asking for private, but I've never seen a figure. I know that the city worked up a budget and projected it could cost up to $5.4 million to build a new shelter. I didn't get to use all my minutes. May I continue?
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, if we're having a private-public setup, I'd like to know just what is required of the private and how much of the public will be coming forth with. And secondly, is this private-public situation also applying to this activity center or this event center? Are the same requirements being made of the event center?
Again, you heard earlier from council, we don't know anything you're talking about, some $12 million event center.
Can you tell me how much then it is?
Hadn't taken place. We don't know, Kelly, as far as how much money the private can raise toward a shelter, which would require how much for the city to spend, and we continue to work with that. I had a meeting this afternoon with two people regarding that very subject. Okay? Private individuals who continue to work and put together some different programs in order to try to continue to raise some money. Okay?
But yes, Mayor, I'm still asking specifically, how much privately will be required of the city? We can't start to raise that money until we know, as a community, how much will be required and how much the city's willing to set forward. And my same question applies to the event center. How much from the private sector is required before the city comes forward to put money into the event center? And just how much money is the event center expected to cost? If I'm wrong with $12 million, then please correct me and give me the right figure.
I've already done that, Kelly. I think your time's up, but I appreciate you being here.
You're not willing to give me a figure?
I don't have a figure. You want me to grab...
Okay. $2, $20 million.
Kelly, Kelly, listen.
Thank you, sir.
Again. Geez. Okay. Presentation items. Item A, presentation on Main Street accomplishments in 2011 and current projects. Ms. Saunders, Promotions and Events Manager, Longview Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, Dorothy.
Good, how are you?
I'm Ms. Saunders with the Longview Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I want to thank you, City Council, Mayor J. Dean, and City Manager David Willard, for this opportunity to present what has been happening with Longview's 100 acres of Heritage Main Street program. Thank you to the city staff that has helped us with this presentation. It was in November 2007 that Longview was recertified as an urban Main Street city, largely because of the support from the city and the city council. In the four years since then, downtown Longview has seen some significant changes, beneficial changes that are making our business district and our 100 acres of heritage a place we can be proud of. This progress would not be possible without the support you have given to the program, as well as the support from the citizens of Longview. Like every successful Main Street program in the country, Longview's program is built upon the four-point system with four committees that we in Longview prefer to call teams. Each team focuses on a key essential element in bringing about the economic development through historic preservation that has brought about the resurgence and interest to invest in downtown Longview. The design team accomplished some very significant goals in 2011. Installation of wayfinding signs throughout the city that helps drivers find their way to downtown. Over 20 signs throughout the city, over 20 signs were designed, created, and installed. This was accomplished again because of a large amount of help from the departments of the city of Longview. This was phase one. As funding is available, the wayfinding will continue to grow, adding signage that is important for visitors, newcomers, and even our citizens to find ways. The design team approved four matching grants for facade improvements. Let us stress again that we are the facilitators of this grant and thank the city of Longview for providing the funds through the Community Development Block Grant they received from HUD. 102 through 106 West Methvin received $5,000 to help them replace front window wall that was in bad repair and places that were broken. 206 North Center received $10,000 to restore upper windows to their original state and to remove metal slip covers above the awning. This was done in an effort to return the building to its original look. Due to funding and major modifications made when the building was changed and the awning was installed, the lower story was not able to be restored at this time. The Longview Museum of Fine Arts at 215 East Tyler Street received $10,000 to complete the facade work on their artworks building. The CDBG funding went only to help on the facade while the greater project was remodeling the interior. 214 North Fredonia, the Gregg County Historical Museum, also was approved for a $5,000 grant to repair the front porch, repair water damage to the front door, stop leaks in the basement through the historical tile on the porch, and to install better security lighting. Design guidelines for all facade improvement projects are being developed by the design team in order to help building owners avoid problems and mistakes. The Economic Restructuring Team identifies new market opportunities for downtown, finds new uses for historic commercial buildings, and stimulates investment in property downtown. They have developed a thorough understanding of the 100 acres of heritage economic condition and its best opportunities to gradually improve the economic foundation and eventually make large-scale investment possible. Their five major responsibilities include: learning about the 100 acres of heritage current economic conditions and identifying opportunity for growth; strengthening existing businesses and re-curring new ones; finding new economic uses for traditional Main Street buildings; developing financial incentives and capital for building rehabilitation and business development; monitoring the economic performance of the district. They've also accomplished this year, and they've done a total inventory of all properties with the 100 acres of heritage, including the owner, tenant, and current use of the property; future plans for the property, availability, assessed value, and have current photographs of all property. They have also completed the business survey by speaking with or personally visiting the owner of the property and/or the tenant. And it only took them 12 weeks to inventory 218 parcels and compile all of the information into binders organized by address. The organization team has created a volunteer recruitment packet to assist in the recruitment and orientation of new volunteers in the Main Street program. This packet also creates awareness for downtown merchant, tenants, and property owners to learn, to let them know what Main Street is doing for downtown. This packet discusses what Main Street is, the four-point approach, Longview's focus, what they have to look forward to, and how they can get involved. The team changed from a monthly newsletter to a quarterly electronic newsletter to communicate the programs, process, and successes of the Main Street project. Any person is welcome to join the mailing list for the Main Street newsletter. The promotion team has had a very successful spring and fall season for downtown market. The market moved across the street to Heritage Plaza and shared the time of Music on the Plaza in 2011. In 2012, a new event has been created that will bring the downtown market and Music on the Plaza together for Friday evenings. This will be called Downtown Live. It will be on Friday evenings, starting at 5:00 p.m. for four nights, and will be held March 23rd and 30th, April 13th and 20th. Downtown Live will be located at Heritage Plaza and will have live music, refreshments, and downtown market vendors. It was moved to evenings in order to attract more people right after work that will come downtown and listen to music and trickle to downtown businesses for the rest of the evening. Movies on the Plaza had one showing in 2011 with an audience of over 800 people. The next scheduled movie will be in the fall of 2012. In 2011, Alley Fest went mobile with mobile website that was maintained with updates throughout the weekend. The mobile site helped promote the artists that were selling their products. And after 33 years, Alley Fest has moved up on the calendar to the middle of May. For the past several years, the unseasonable heat conditions and conflicts with the area school graduations has prompted the new date for Alley Fest to be May 11th through 13th. This has brought new ideas as plans are being made to incorporate Mother's Day outing to Sunday, the 13th. Additional programs that include assistance are the Quarterly Art Walk, which is organized by Downtown Merchants, Downtown Christmas Parade, and Assistance with the Gregg County and the Christmas at the Courthouse. Again, I want to thank y'all for letting me present that.
Thank you for being here. Very good job. And we've gotten lots of compliments on those new, the pretty new blue signs around town.
Oh, yes.
Matter of fact, at our town hall meeting, Mr. Allen's district, someone asked us to put some other information on one of them. What was that? Oh, the depot. Oh, okay. That's right. That was down. Good. So they accommodated us and said, "We'll take care of that." So signs look really good.
They look great.
And that's just phase one, so more phases to come.
Well, we're looking forward to it. Thank you to the whole chamber, Kelly. Thank you and your staff. Great job. Okay, the next item is a presentation on Convention and Visitors Bureau for 2011. Paul Anderson. Good afternoon, Mr. Anderson.
Good afternoon. I do want to thank you...
Where's your camera today, man? Every time I see Paul, he's got this, he's got this thing around his neck. The cameraman. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Paul.
Yes, actually, it's in, it's in my car, but...
I knew it wasn't far away.
Well, thank you, Mayor Dean and City Manager, Mr. Willard, and the council. We appreciate your opportunity you've given us to speak today. And just as Main Street is beholden to the city for so much support, so is the Convention Visitors Bureau. It is through your help and your funding that we're able to promote Longview as a prime destination for visitors. And I want to take just a few minutes and tell you about what has been done in 2011 because we've done some very significant things. We, okay. Real East Texas Hospitality Training, which has been a classroom session up until now, has been changed to incorporate a luxury motor coach tour of our attractions. The curriculum and the program have been developed for hospitality training, as well as learning more about Longview. Training sections are conducted on the coach between stops. An attractively designed and formatted high, in-depth training resource manual is provided to all participants to assure they have completed the information on Longview's attractions. Two tours were conducted in 2011 using this new format, and the success and response has been overwhelming. The first one was on April 8th. The second one was on October 21st. And two weeks before that, it was packed out. We have three scheduled for 2012. There is no cost to participants who take the tour, and each receives a nice certificate of completion. The Bureau expanded its social media to promote Longview, specifically events in Longview. And we do it in a rather interesting way. Using the popular online Longview community calendar, which we have, events are put on the Facebook pages, and from there, they go, are pushed to Twitter pages. And the same thing is done to, with the Main Street attractions. This has increased our potential quite a bit through the multiple ability to retweet, if you understand what I mean, that people repeat what you say to their friends and to their friends. And so, just with a couple of trips, we're in several thousand. Now, geocaching. Geocaching, I need to define, because not everybody understands it. It is a fun and family-oriented outdoor activity that is growing in popularity. Geocaching is a high-tech treasure hunting game played throughout the world by adventure seekers equipped with GPS devices. And the basic idea is to locate hidden containers, called geocaches, outdoors, and then share those experiences online and with friends. Within five miles of the city hall, there are 90 caches registered with geocaching.com. There are 1.61 million active geocachers and over five, active geocaches in over 5 million geocachers. That's the people who do it. Worldwide, in the last 30 days, there have been 4.35 million new logs submitted to geocaching.com. So we find that this is the strong potential to be able to attract people, families, groups, to Longview. And we instituted that this year by way of a little contest. The Longview Convention Visitors Bureau developed geocaching experience with uniquely Longview. Working with uniquely Longview, the Geocache Contest offered on all-expense staycation. That's two nights for two at the Homewood Suites, two Alley Fest VIP hospitality passes, good for admission, all weekend, two Great Texas Balloon Race VIP passes for all weekend, dinner for two and a bottle of wine at Enix Stomp Winery, and a special gift basket. All this went to the grand prize winner of the first one who completed the challenge. The challenge was six different caches that they had to find. But they had to find all of them, all the first five, in order to discover where the sixth one was. The next 100 people who continue to find this, because the contest isn't over, the next 100 people will receive a commemorative coin. And today, about one-third of those have been given out. So it's still going on, and we're still promoting that idea. Now, this is what one person said. Nice series that takes you on a nice journey through the local area. Very interesting places to visit. Keep up the good work, and the series well done. Thanks for the coin, it was very nice. This was a visitor, not a Longview resident, who played this thing and did it. The Longview Chamber of Commerce created also an online store this year. So if anybody says to you that we'd like to buy something with Longview's name on it, there it is. Shop dot visitlongviewtexas dot com. You can also get there with shop dot longviewchamber dot com. Other significant program activities included the redesign and publishing of a new visitor guide, publishing of 10 Reasons to Visit Longview, Texas. We placed 128 print and internet ads in regional, state, and national publications and travel websites. We mailed 5,121 visitor brochures via individual request. 7,649 brochures were also downloaded. The Bureau provided services for more than 61 groups and included 3,532 welcome bags. Distribution of over 21,000 brochures, rack cards, maps, and festival guides to other chambers and travel centers in Texas. A longtime need in Longview has been a visitor center. A long time has been a visitor center. In 2011, the Longview Chamber of Commerce, CBB, and this was the initiative of one of our staff, Margie Harris, designed a plan and a plan to make use of existing space in its building at 410 North Center Street. The visitor center now has display racks for Longview information, display racks for regional information, and a display rack for Texas travel information. There is also a TV monitor that displays local information, videos as such, events, weather. And there is a computer station for visitors who need to research attractions in Longview or even just check up on their email. They can do that there. We have a complete mounted map of Texas and a pictorial history of Longview that runs down the hallway from the visitor center down to the Convention Visitor Bureau offices. And, just completed, folks, is the Texas Is Our Hometown Faces Wall, or our Wall of Fame, featuring people with significant accomplishments that were both born, that were either born, raised, or otherwise made Longview their home during their lifetime. There are four large shields that display and tell the story of four significant people, celebrities. And the one there is Karen Silkwood, who came from Longview. And atop of that are four more, and each of them have stories on two different people. There are additional panels on the left side that list 28 more people. So we have an impact of 40 people that have made a significant contribution to their world, to our world, and they came from Longview. And I'd just like to say, y'all are welcome. Anytime during business hours, to come up there and spend your time looking at it. We believe that this Wall of Fame, Hometown Faces, is going to become in and of itself an attraction for people. They will want to stop and see it, if, for no other reason, when they come to town. Any questions?
Not a question, just a comment. The pictures are very nice. I was there last week, and they came out great. Real pretty. And it done classy. I mean, did you take those pictures? He did. Ah, oh, never mind. I would've, should've known. No, they, it was, I mean, very classy, the way y'all did them and the way they sat on the wall, real nice. Are y'all going to continue to add people to that as time goes on?
Well, we'll see. Right now, there aren't any plans.
As they become famous, right?
Yeah, when they become famous. We'll just wrap it around the corner.
All right, Mr. Sims, there's your challenge, right there, buddy. You get famous, they're gonna put you on that Wall of Fame. There you go. Thanks, Paul.
I don't know why I'm not on there.
Oh. The Wall of Exxon. The Wall of Exxon. Okay. Moving right along. We're gonna do the consent agenda next, council. Is there any item on the consent agenda that council would like to pull for separate consideration?
I'd like to ask a question on B.
Okay. Got one question on B. Anybody else? Okay, B item would be, let's see. Keith Bonds.
You have a list of streets that that's gonna cover?
Yes, sir. Let's see. Somewhere, okay. We're gonna do Martin Luther King, Junior Boulevard, from Cotton to Young. High Street, two sections, Marion to Garfield and Nelson to Potter. Delwood Drive, Fourth Street to Oliver. Green Street, Avalon to Mobberley. Two sections of Fairmont, Gilmer to Bill Owens and Bill Owens to McCann.
Okay. What I'd maybe suggest, Keith, in the future is to, we used to include that with, you know, the handout the council gets. Maybe we can do is, in the future, is make sure that list of what roads you're gonna be doing is there.
No, you didn't have one. We'll make sure you get one next time.
We used to do it, but I think it's probably good information to have. Because council, you know, from each district gets calls about, "When are they gonna be fixing my road?" And so that would give them some information to give to the public.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion on a consent agenda?
So, most.
Have a motion, second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Action items. Conduct a public hearing and consider resolution adopting a community revitalization and redevelopment plan. Mr. Chuck Ewing.
Mayor, members of council. This item and the items B and C are all related. A developer is requesting city support with regard to a low-income housing tax credit project. They will be applying for tax credits for a project through the state of Texas, through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. The first step is to include this area within a revitalization plan. So the first item is to have a public hearing on that plan, which will include the hatched area shown in the, in the, in this, just in the northwest portion, corner of Hawkins Parkway and McCann Road.
Okay.
This was rezoned about two weeks ago by city council for multifamilies.
Okay. This item requires a public hearing, and we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And I have one speaker card from Lisa Stevens, but I think she's here to answer any questions. Okay, there she is. How you doing? From Austin, huh?
Yes.
Okay, welcome to Longview. Any questions of Ms. Stevens? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this matter? Okay, if not, the public hearing closed. Council questions? Mr. Allen.
Mr. Ewing, or whoever. The City of Longview Community Revitalization and Redevelopment Plan. The summary. The City of Longview has developed the City of Longview Community Revitalization and Revitalization, what's a big word? And redevelopment plan in order to promote growth and community revitalization and develop in targeted areas. We're talking about a high-income, high-growth area in North Longview. We're talking about a high-income, high-growth area in North Longview, and I just cannot understand, according to the goals of this plan, first off, it says to, these are the goals that we would adopt in this plan. Number one is to encourage the redevelopment of underused buildings and vacant lots. That's listed as number one. We've got many in the area I represent, and I think they're all over town. We've got many unused buildings that the, I'm sure if we went in and helped the owner of this property redevelop these buildings, they would be more commercially viable, and vacant lots that we could clean up, that would make them more commercially viable, would make them where they could be sold. Number two is encourage the maintenance of existing structures. I think we'll all agree that there are structures in each of our districts around town that we could certainly use this money on as far as helping and maintain these structures and get them in condition where they could be marketable, occupied, or sold. It's just, I just don't understand why we're taking revitalization money and putting it in a high-income, high-rent district.
Well, this plan, this plan is to really meet the requirements for these tax credits. In this case, the, this one hundred and fifty-six thousand that may be used from home dollars that the applicant has applied for can only go for low-income housing, period. It would not be able to use in any kind of commercial structure or anything, so.
All right, we could use this on the two duplexes. Couldn't we use this on the two, two, excuse me, duplexes that we approved earlier?
Well, we are using this year's home funds for those two duplexes, but we could build more duplexes with these home funds.
Okay, we could.
Yes, sir.
Instead of building it in North Longview, high-development area, this, this piece of property will be developed. There's no question that it's a high-income, a high-marketable piece of property. I just think these funds could be used much better in other areas of town.
Well, this would accelerate that development and provide low-income housing. Is it really the ultimate goal?
Who says it will accelerate it?
If it were awarded, if it were awarded the tax credits, then they would be able to do the project, so therefore it would be developed.
How do you know an individual, this is a private company, how do you know another one is not gonna come along?
I don't.
Without, without our subsidy?
They may.
And be willing to do the project at a different scale. You know, I mean, we don't know that.
Ms. Allen, let me, let me ask a couple, the source of funds that we're talking is, what are those sources?
These would be housing, I'm sorry. Well, it's home is the acronym, which doesn't fit. Housing Investment Partnership Act from HUD. These are funds we receive from HUD annually.
That would go to, to this project?
Yes, sir.
And you said that, that those funds can only be used for low-income houses?
Yes, sir.
Or housing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Did you have something, Ms. Manley?
First of all, Mr. Allen, there's a need for this in the city.
I agree.
And regardless of where we locate it, whether it's North Longview, South Longview, East-West Longview, there's a need in the city. So that's the first thing I want to say. Secondly, as much as you or any of us might like to see someone come in and develop it, we have a company, a viable company, that's ready to do it right now. So with the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, rather than sourcing or using it to build housing that would, or something that would house two families, we'd be able to spend one hundred and fifty thousand and house eighty families, because I believe there's gonna be eighty units, is that correct?
Seventy-eight will be dedicated to low-income.
So I think it's a good idea for those reasons.
Okay, hold on a second. Anybody, Casher?
I wanted to, because I had several concerns prior to the meeting and have already discussed this with Lisa as well as Chuck. I believe that there were some specific areas that had to be targeted, and this particular piece of property was more appropriate at this time as far as receiving the tax credits. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck or Lisa.
Yeah, this year.
Because there are different, the parameters change annually. It's not always the same.
Yes, ma'am, under the scoring this year, under the scoring this year, as I understand, the opportunity for points, there's a point system for how these tax credits are awarded, and they, projects that are in outside of normal target areas will receive more points than this is outside that area. So basically, TDHCA is encouraging projects out, you know, within these types of areas.
Okay, did you have something else, Ms. Allen?
I just, there are several projects that have been built. I'm thinking one south of Laterno University, one on eighteen forty-five, and another one. Were all of those projects subsidized in this way?
In the past, yes, sir. And actually, they.
All of those projects had city participation.
I don't remember about Highland Village. I know the, the project on Whaley is a senior project. It has received subsidies and participation by the city, yes.
Well, that's in the slip area, too.
Yes, and if this project were in the slip area, this wouldn't be necessary because it would already be within a target area.
Chuck, let me ask you a question. I've been talking to some of the folks over in the Pine Tree area about some redevelopment opportunities, and, and I think it's great if we can, I mean, because again, like Richard said, it's, it's all over the community. I mean, just because you may be in North Longview doesn't mean there's not, you know, lower-income areas up there and all over town. And, and, you know, one of the things in, for instance, in the Pine Tree area is where, where are the additional, you know, properties such as this that we could maybe, you know, make, make, available or make people aware of so that, you know, every year, if we're gonna be looking at the same kind of program year in, year out, then we, we really ought to try to spread it around, you know, throughout the whole community. So I would, I would ask that we make, you know, that information available.
Sure.
You know, throughout the community, see where there's other pieces of property.
And a portion of that area is in our, in our C D B G target area, so some of these funds would be available in that area as well.
Okay, Mr. Frost.
There were also about six of these applications, and these were the people that on one met everything they had to meet.
That made a formal request for, for city participation. Yes, sir. The, some of the other projects did not score as high in the pre-application process through T D H C A.
And the reasons for that were?
Location, maybe. I, I'm not familiar with their scoring process. Like I said, this was outside the normal target. They were inside, they were expansion projects. I think there were a lot of other, it's really a fast process, and if you're not really ready for it and what the, you know, then I don't know if they had every, all their plans together to be able to, to move forward, so. But we would have entertained all of those that were ready, so.
Okay, Ms. Allen.
Could this money, previously, when we were discussing the duplexes, the understanding was the money could also be used for Habitat for Humanity. Could this money also be used through Habitat for Humanity?
If they requested.
If they requested, it could be used.
And that they had a project, yes, sir. And they already get a portion of these funds every year automatically because they're a chodo, so.
So all they need to do would be requested.
But they, but they have not requested because you say they already received.
They receive funding for a project, their project manager and some of their other home projects, housing projects, through a separate source of funding within the C D B G program.
Other questions?
Not defined low income.
It's within, a certain percentage within a hundred percent of the federal guidelines. I, I can't tell you the amount, what the income level is, but there's a federal guideline as far as what defines low income.
It's not section-eight housing. It's a different type of property.
Section-eight clients would be eligible for these properties.
But these aren't what you'd consider section-eight housing in terms?
No, these are low, they have to make them available to low income whether they have a section-eight voucher or not, so the, the tenants do have to have a certain income level to be, to be able to reside within these seventy-eight units.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm looking at it from the perspective of, I, this is something that's going on across the state and across the country, and perhaps this will be a good opportunity for Longview to get on board in receiving substantial amounts for these tax credit-funded low-income projects. And perhaps the next go-around, it may be in a different area if we qualify again, because this particular piece of property, I go back to that, this new construction is why this project has, not only have they done their homework, it scored very highly across the board, and, and it was a tedious process, from what I understand.
Okay, Ms. Manley.
And in addition to that, it's my understanding they have broken granted Tyler and fairly well along the way, and everything I understand from the Tyler folks is that they're extremely happy with this company and have high hopes for a very successful project, so they have some history.
Any other questions? May I have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Yes.
Okay, all right, motion passes. Item B is to consider resolution appointing Amberwood Place LLC to act on the City of Longview's behalf in applying for the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Home Funds.
There are state home funds available as well for these types of projects, so they would be able to apply for these funds on behalf of the City of Longview for this project to, to get additional funding for the project.
Okay.
And that's what this resolution allows.
Questions, comments? If not, may I have a motion on item B?
Moved to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item C is to consider a resolution providing a commitment of financial support in amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for the low-income housing tax credit project. Mr. Ewing.
This project would receive additional points, maximum points available if they received two thousand per unit in city participation. This would allow for that participation in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And we do have available home funds. The applicant has applied for those home funds that the city receives, and this would be, if, if the project were selected, these would be awarded next year as part of our normal home program.
Okay. Questions, comments on item C? If not, may I have a motion? Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Oh, excuse me, opposed by Mr. Allen. Did you oppose on B and?
You were too quick.
I was too quick. Well, for the record, Mr. Allen voted no to items A, B, and C, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Going against B now.
Okay, item D is to, come on, guys. Item D is to consent ordinance increasing the rate of the local hotel occupancy tax rate to nine percent of the room paid for a room in a hotel, and providing for the allocation of the increase for convention center facilities as required by law. Counsel, you recall our, our recent retreat out at Laterno, and this was an item that was on the agenda.
Work session?
Excuse me, a work, what did I say? A retreat?
Work session.
Well, it's a retreat. Okay, work session. Work session for some, retreat for others.
It's a big day for us.
Man, all right. So anyway, anyway, it was council's wish that this item be put on the agenda to move forward with that, that item. The purpose for putting that on the agenda was to address some needs out at the rodeo arena, in particular, the construction of concession stands, and also the construction of restrooms, which neither currently exist at the existing rodeo arena. Counsel also asked that I meet with the hotel motel owners association, which I did with the help of Kelly Hall and, and the Chamber. We met week before last with, unfortunately, we didn't have near the number of owners there that we had for the original meeting when the legislation was being drafted. And, you know, I will advise counsel that the group was sort of split, and not sort of, they were split, like half wanted to go ahead and do it now, half didn't. And, and what I could determine in, in the discussion, the ones that didn't felt like, one gentleman in particular pointed out that they were trying to raise their rates, and so when you throw the, from seven percent to nine percent into the rate that undoubtedly they were trying to raise, because in some cases they felt like, you know, their current rates were too low. So at some point in time, they've lowered their rates on, on the rooms, and now they're trying to raise the rate. So if they raise a rate fifteen percent and then they add this extra two percent, they were concerned about that. So we did, we did take that into consideration. We asked them to show a hand to vote how they wanted us to proceed, and like I said, it was pretty much almost down the middle, some for, some against. I will tell you that after the meeting, the owners that were there present recommended that we set up a second meeting, and one, one owner in particular, I think Mr. Dick Patel, offered to contact all the owners because they felt more owners should have been there. So I don't know how the vote would have come differently, one way or the other, had all the owners been there. They were all there when the first meeting took place to develop the legislation, and they were unanimous in their support for this. You know, ladies and gentlemen, let me also say this. When this was taking place, there were concerns by, by our legislators and even by the governor because a number of communities were enacting this additional hotel motel tax. And I want to make sure it's, it's clear that this is money that is charged to people that actually come in and stay in our hotels. It's, it's, some people call it a transient tax. It's not a tax directly to the Longview citizens in the form of a sales tax. It's a, it's a transient tax. But it was, it was, the concern was that this money, instead of going to the Maude Cobb Complex, okay, might be used for parks, might be used for something else. And, and we, me personally, and I think we as council said, at that time, we were reviewing a potential partnership with the county to build a multipurpose event center, and that that event center would, monies collected would go toward operations and future enhancements to that facility. One of the things in, in, when we had our retreat, I think what council's thought process was is now that there's no longer any consideration for a partnership between the city and the county, this is, anything out there will be a city project. And, and what the county, what, what, what council talked about was now that we're spending this money to build and improve, enhance the rodeo arena, that any, any discussion about a future event center would not require the size floor plan that you would need if you did held indoor rodeos and that type of thing. So council felt like the, the scope of the project has changed, and again, for the record, there's been no discussion about a twelve-million-dollar event center. I don't know where that comes from. I don't think it's come from any member here. Matter of fact, the only numbers I ever heard was more like twenty, twenty-five, twenty-eight, thirty-eight million, so maybe, maybe Ms. Highcamp got, got a better deal going somewhere. But the reality is, in, in all due respect, there's been no discussions of that. And from this council member's standpoint, if there, if, if the county, excuse me, if the, if the city, the community, the citizens of Longview are so inclined that an event center be built at the Maude Cobb Complex, I will assure you, this council member will vote to make that a voter-approved referendum. That will not be something that we're gonna, you know, backroom spring on somebody. Project of that size should be a voter-approved referendum, not a council, okay? And I, I think everybody is, is supportive of doing that. So for the public, I want to make sure there's no discussions at this time going on about an event center. I think people made their, made their feelings well-known through the paper surveys, et cetera, of what they thought about that. You know, in the future, if, if council wants to bring forth something for the citizens to take, take a look at, again, it would have to be a voter-approved referendum, okay? So I just want to make sure we're, we're all on the same page on that. So this money, the difference between the seven percent and the nine percent generates about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. I think we're talking about Mr. Bonds, the concessions and the restrooms, approximately a million point three hundred thousand dollars to complete that process, that, that project. And again, that particular facility can host and entertain a number of different events that in the past we, we couldn't do. So that's, counsel, would anybody else like to comment on that? Mr. Sims?
Have you heard any more, you know, Darrell Primo suggested that we, the county, put a roof over it. Have you heard any more about that?
No, sir. And, and Mr. Sims, as you know, the, the process for interlocal agreements between the county and the city initiates from the city, and we have made no request to build a million, or in his words, I think, two-million-dollar roof on, onto that facility. So none of those requests have been made.
He, he brought it forward. It was his suggestion that he was gonna take to the commissioners.
Well, I, I would, I would have, again, me personally, I'll speak for the whole council, but that's something Mr. Primo needs to discuss with the commissioners' court.
Right.
Should the city ask or request. What we're, what, what we're trying to do right now is have the rodeo arena up and running for its first major event, which is the second week, I think, of May, which is, or, excuse me, April. Get the Rotary Club members out here nervous, but for their, it's the biggest event that takes place out there. So if council wants to consider any additional enhancements out there in the future, that, the process would be, we'd make recommendations to the county via our interlocal agreement, and there's been no discussion of that. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Allen?
First off, I want to congratulate the mayor. The mayor's put a lot of time and work in this, starting with the Senate bill, and I think it's well-written, it's very restrictive. The money will not be used for other projects the way the bill is written. It's a, I think it's a small first step moving toward an event center.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Manley, I'd like to add that when we, when we think about Maude Cobb, we need to stop thinking about Maude Cobb as just a building, and that's the point of all this. The, the rodeo is part of the Maude Cobb Complex, which incorporates, obviously, the Maude Cobb Building, but a number of other facilities out there, the rodeo being probably the most important one after Maude Cobb. And I wanted to also add, as we all know here, that the, the rodeo has been utilized even more in recent history than in the past. And the point of the, and another point, the point behind putting the two percent increase in taxes on this was to help encourage the improvement of that area that would put heads in beds, that the hotel people would benefit from. And so if it's a hundred-dollar room, it's gonna add two dollars to a hundred-dollar room, paid for by people driving up and down I-20, hopefully coming to the rodeo to, to put heads in beds and go to our restaurants and to our stores here in town. So I just think it's a really fine idea. I think it's true to the purpose behind the increase in the tax, and again, that's our commitment to the Maude Cobb Complex. That may or may not include some type of. The mayor may not include some type of event center downtown, down run.
Okay. Any else have anything? Okay, counsel, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion? Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. E, consider a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager or the manager's designated to execute a developer participation agreement. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Riller. I'm just here really to answer any questions that you may have about this, this just authorizing, as you said, the city manager to enter into an agreement for a developer to pay for a crossing over the northern portion of Hensley Park to allow development of their property and access onto 259 to further development potential there.
Questions? Inside the city limits, correct?
Definitely inside the city limits, yes.
Okay, if there's no question, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Items of community interest. Mr. Sims?
I've been kind of dull this past week, no.
You've been kind of dull?
Yeah, nothing interesting.
You've got to be kidding me. Mr. Williams?
I would just like to mention my junior achievement class at Forest Park Middle School. I've been involved in junior achievement for about four years now, and I've been involved with this class over at Forest Park, the seventh graders, and I just told them on Tuesday that I would mention them on the, at our meeting tonight, and I told them to watch it, and this has been one of my best classes that I've had, and I really enjoyed them, and I, they were real special groups, I wanted to mention. And just by coincidence, they happen to be taught by Ms. Casher's aunt.
Oh.
I didn't know that at first, but I found that out. So she's been a real good teacher there, and she's doing a real good job with her seventh grade, first period history class.
There you go.
Hello.
All right. Okay, Ms. Casher?
I just want to remind everyone, encourage you to come out and support. If you don't have anything to do Saturday night, Longview Top Ladies of Distinction Incorporated will host our 30th Annual Hearts of Love Scholarship Fundraiser, benefiting something near and dear to my heart, Top Teens of America. It will be at the Summit Club, beginning at 7:00, it will go until 11:00, or if you feel like partying, we may stay a little later. But please do, I just want to say I appreciate all the community support from different people for Top Teens of America and Top Ladies of Distinction. Thank you.
Good program. Okay, Mr. Frost?
Last week, I attended a ribbon cutting over at the library. They opened up the IMAC computer lab. They already had a bank of PCs, and then they opened up this IMAC computer lab, it's got 23 IMACs. The Junior League of Longview donated $50,000 for it. The Library Foundation and the friends of the library made up the rest of it. And it's a very impressive place, and it's a good place for people to learn the skills that they need. We talk about our labor forces, our manufacturing, whatever, we need, you need those skills now. You don't just need to be out there using a drill and manufacturing. This stuff is high-tech, and so this is a good place for people to go in and learn how to use those computers.
What do you think, Ms. Allen?
He wouldn't know how to use it.
Richard, Mr. Manley?
I'd like to bring something to the attention of our citizens that's gotten a fair amount of publicity, both in the paper and on some of the TV stations, and that's what appears to be a chronic problem with people blowing right by a school bus when the sign is out and lights are flashing. As the chief pointed out to me, I was just chatting with him, this has been in the Texas law forever, and nothing has changed. So for some reason, people seem to have some confusion about the fact that, maybe it's a four-lane road like Judson Road, and what the chief said, that even if it's a five-lane road with a turn lane in the middle, if there's a bus stopped on the other side coming against you, and they've stopped, and their sign is out, and the lights are flashing, you're supposed to stop. So my advice would be to any citizen, if you're not sure, stop. It could be your kid or your grandkid that's just about to get run over by somebody else blowing through the stop sign, or stopped by the, by the school bus. Encourage your friends, encourage other people, and let's have a conversation about this before one of our kids gets hurt. Thank you.
Good point, Richard, thanks. Mr. Allen?
Just, Richard's exactly right. I remember when I was a kid growing up out in West Texas, New Mexico, along the highways where the school buses used to stop, they always had the signs, very plain English, "It is illegal to pass a school bus parked in either direction." And we might want to get a few of those around Longview.
Well, you know, I'm glad you all brought that up, because I've gotten some calls about that, and, you know, it's really, it's real specific to that one small stretch of road. And last week, I left City Hall, and I went up that way right about school time, when school lets out, and I got behind a bus right there, just to the, I guess, just to the south of Oakland Heights Baptist Church, and I was going to mention this to the chief. But one of the things that was confusing, chief, was that that bus started slowing down, it wasn't at the red light yet, but it started slowing down, and the amber lights came on, and bus wasn't completely stopped. Then, when the bus stopped completely, the red lights came on, and then after, the sign folded out. So I'm thinking, and a gentleman called, I think he sent all of us an email, and I spoke to him today, he said possibly, because I was a little confused, I knew when the amber lights, but they were still rolling and people going by. I stopped behind the bus, but I'm just wondering if the calibration, because those signs, I mean, there was a delay from the time the amber light went on, to the time the red light came on, till the time that the stop sign folded out, and it could be a little confusing. So I was going to suggest to the, to the chief that he visit, I think it's Longview School District buses, you know, I mean, like Richard said, if in doubt, stop, but I just think what we need to do is contact the school district, because again, that many, you know, 80% of the tickets we write for that were done in that one, what, several block area? It's just a huge number. So chief, I'd ask you to, you know, get with the school district and discuss that with them, and see if the delay may be causing some confusion, and we should, we should, you know, maybe put something on our Channel 5 to continue to help educate people, so. Thanks for bringing it up. Let's see what we have here. Adult softball spring league registration ends February 24th, and late registration ends March 12th. For more information, call 903-237-1270. March 1st is the deadline for city board commission or committee applications for 2012. If you'd like to volunteer and serve, please visit our website at www-longviewtexas.gov, click on city government, and then boards and commissions. You'll find an application that you can fill out and submit online. You can also call the city manager's office at 903-237-1021 and speak with Ms. Judy. Right, Ms. Mary Ann? All right. So I can't talk to you, too, now. I can talk to Mary Ann, too.
Absolutely.
All right. Also, you know, we talked about the first citizen comment about the animal shelter. I want to invite the public to hear world-renowned animal advocate Mike Arms at 6:30 PM Friday, March 2nd at Papa Sita's. You know, a lot of the, a lot of discussions about, public, private, about the animal shelter is, is, you know, there's a lot of different parts to that whole, that whole issue. Some individuals have invited this gentleman, again, who has worked with these programs with adoptions and all the things that really go in to an animal shelter, to come here and to speak to the public and try to help us get our arms around what it is we should do and how to go about doing it. So I want to invite the public to please come out, like I said, Friday, March 2nd, Papa Sita's, 6:30 PM. And if there's nothing else, counsel, meeting is adjourned.